Now is the time to check your cell phones and please turn them off. Our vision statement, "All our students achieve success in college, career, and life." And the thought for the day is Ms. Harding.
This was a lesson that our very own Beth Hess shared with her new teacher academy, and when I read it, it really resonated with me, and even on the hardest of days, so I thought it was a really great reminder. So she said it was an NTA lesson. "You are a shiny new apple. You intrigue kids when you go into work with them because you're a teenager, or a new teacher, or a teacher, and you are cool nevertheless. Stay humble. They work hard for you to impress you. Teaching is hard work. If you stayed in class for a couple months, the bad apples will once again start to rot, no matter how cool you are. Those are the ones who need you the most. Polish them and trim away the brown spots. They are still worthy of being part of the pile, of the pie. Learn from the seasoned teachers who return to the orchard every single year and follow their path."
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all board members are present. Now I need to ask for a moment of silence for the family of Lisa Good, a 4th grade Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on February 18.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Crumley, second by Altman. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. We have no public hearings and no special presentations. So we are at...
Yeah, Madam Chairman, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
No, just before we get into public comment, I want to make sure the board was aware that I pulled item 9.4 yesterday. I need more information from staff before I get the board to authorize travel, so that will not be on the agenda today at all for consideration. Thank you.
I saw that. Thank you. Are there any other green cards?
I've not received any of the cards.
Are there green cards right there?
No.
Oh, okay. So do we need to say anything?
Nope.
That there was no... We need the record to reflect? Okay.
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we are moving on to USET. Is there anyone from USET? Hi Lynn, thank you.
Sorry, I'm here on behalf of Don this morning. He had a slight accident in his home over the weekend, so he's resting there comfortably, but he just wanted to, again, express his gratitude about the way that we've been working in a very collegial manner. So he just wanted you to all know he appreciated that, and our members appreciate it.
Wish him well for us.
I will.
Your board member committee reports, Mrs. Harding?
Yes, I have a couple. I wanted to give you guys a little update on the transition team meeting that's going on with Hudson Elementary, Gulf Highlands, Fox Hollow, and Northwest. It was a really, really, really great meeting. I was blown away how awesome it was. Mrs. Hilton did an amazing job at leading it. She went over the purpose and a project update, then she went around to each table and had the parents, the teachers, the administrators, like, state their concerns that they had, and then they wrote them on a huge chart paper, and then together they collapsed the ones that were very similar, and then they prioritized them. And then they had an opportunity, we had an opportunity to split into groups to get ideas on how we can create positive cultures during this transition, so every single group hadn't got to put their own ideas down, and we were able to compile those ideas. So I was just, wanted to thank Mrs. Hilton again, I was just so thankful for the first meeting, I think it went really well. And I look forward to this one's meeting to hear about the supports we're going to be putting in place to help our schools have opportunity. And I also made a copy of all the meeting notes for you guys, so you guys could have, kind of see the different questions and stuff that are concerns that people have. I also got to attend a career and technical, career education board meeting, so I wanted to first thank Dr. Kim Morris. Since the day that she was hired, she's really jumped in to make our CTE programs the very best. It was evident in our meeting as she invited community stakeholders. We're really, really blessed to have her. I also made a copy of the PowerPoint that we utilized for you guys. Sorry. See, you had it. We talked about the vision, the rebranding, how we can connect businesses within the schools, how we can form relationships within our communities, how we can make students excited to join our programs. They mentioned something about even having like a CTE signing day, like we do for sports. I thought that was a really good idea. We talked about how we can start to get kids excited from starting at pre-K on. And we talked about the education highway, which is in your PowerPoint, that it's important for us to remember that this highway has a lot of on and off ramps. We did decide as a group that we want to merge our committee into the EDC Workforce Committee, because we believe that it will give us a greater opportunity, as well as be more effective. It's going to help us better form relationships and collaborations with our stakeholders, so we can teach our students the skills our industry partners want to see. So if you have any questions about that, I'm sure she'd be more than willing to answer some of those, but it was a very successful meeting. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had no committee's meet. None for me.
Well, I guess Ms. Harding and I'll make up for y'all, because I had a very busy week also. So let me just give you a brief update on the insurance committee. First, I'll tell you that our average monthly claims for 2019 were $5,136,000 a month that were paid on behalf of our employees and families for health insurance benefits. The good news is, is that stable, where I can tell you, being in the industry, that most people are in upward ticks. We are up a little bit, but our health plans are stable currently, and the Health Committee's doing a tremendous job of continuing to work on efficiencies and doing things to improve service and reduce expenses. One of those things is an expanded prescription access plan that's going to involve separate windows and a pharmacy that will be there where employees will not have to make an appointment, in all cases, with a health provider for just maintenance drugs. It is hopefully going to free up and provide more efficiency for our doctors, and also provide quicker service and a broader array of availability at no cost to our employees. So all of that is ongoing, so you may hear some talk about renovations in our facilities where we provide health services. Those are ongoing. Some were built with this in mind, and it's going to be relatively painless, but some of them were not. And they're cramped for space already, and it's going to be interesting. They work continuously on improving services and access for that. So also, to let you know, this has not been announced yet, but there will be a relationship that we have formed with Moffitt when it comes to cancer care for our employees. Moffitt is by far the most frequent provider of services. And so the district and the insurance committee and staff are working with Moffitt to provide a direct connection service that hopefully will speed up access and allow quicker appointments, and some dedicated specialists to help walk through the process, because one of the things that was mentioned by several of the people in that committee is the overwhelming amount of paperwork in order to get through there. And so because of our size and because of the relationship, they're going to have a portal that's going to provide some specialists to assist our employees and families in getting direct services and stuff for that, so they're working on it. And then last on that part, we have partnered with the Health, the Start Coalition. I don't know how to delicately say this, but one of the things that came up is that we have a lot of female employees, and we have a lot of pregnant employees. And so the safe sleep presentation was, they felt important, and so we're partnering with them and doing that Saturday, April the 18th, here in Land O' Lakes, and you can get access to that and sign up beforehand if you know anybody that's interested in that. And then yesterday, we met with Construction Facilities. As you know, there are five projects that we are working on. We have contracting firms that have submitted proposals for that, the ones that have met the qualifications, believe it or not, I've been now 13 years doing this, and this is the most, there's 22 firms that want to do work at Pasco County. And all of them met some pretty strenuous bonding requirements and other stuff to make that grade, and so I think that speaks well for our district, and so we will be going through those and narrowing that list, and then we will go back for another round of interviews. So that work on our West Side schools is actively in play, and those hopefully will be selected within the next few weeks and brought to you all for a vote. So that's it right now.
Thank you. I had student progression plan meeting on the 19th. I want to thank Samantha Del Valle, she happens to be here, I get to do that person. There was a lot of discussion about retention and placement determinations for 8th grade students who do not meet all promotion requirements. The group is looking for the best way to support the students, so they can complete their middle school requirements and also earn high school credit where it's appropriate. We want to make sure that we are setting the students up for success and providing opportunities. Different schools offer different courses, so it's important that the staffs at the middle high feeder patterns and the educational centers communicate with each other. We also discussed where proposed middle school off-track prevention and guidelines, so that there are best practices in place to support students with consistency across the district. We continue to work in our breakout groups by level. I'm on the High School Committee, which is led by Matt McDermott from Wesley Chapel High School, and I'm grateful for the people on this committee, including Dr. Isles. We will continue working in our subgroups at our April meeting, and then in June, we'll do our final review as a whole group, and then the summary of changes. We'll go to Superintendent Staff June 8th, and the public workshop will be June 16th. So we're on schedule for what we usually do in June. And that's for me. So Superintendent Browning?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just a couple of things. One point of praise since our last meeting, and I know you all know this, but I like bragging about it, is that the Cambridge International has designated Pasco Middle School a Cambridge Demonstration Center. They are one of two in the country that have received such designation. We're extremely proud of them, and Cambridge will use Pasco Middle School as a site where they can bring other schools and school leaders into to see how you can implement the Cambridge program with fidelity. I just want to give a big shout out to DeeDee Johnson, who's the principal at Pasco Middle School, but also Kim Anderson, the principal at San Antonio Elementary School, who was principal at Pasco Middle School, and the entire team and the staff that made that happen. That was not an easy lift, and just much thanks goes to those two ladies, their teams, and Pasco Middle School as a whole, and district staff that helped make that happen as well. Also, this morning, I'm sure you've had a TV on in the last 36 to 72 hours, you've heard about this little virus thing that we're having to deal with. And I've asked Ms. Kuhn, when she goes to give a report this morning, if she'd just bring the board up to date on what precautions that we're taking as a district to minimize the impacts on our student population. Also, you have on your desk what would become item 15.4, which is an off-agenda item. This is a very recent hire at Sunlake High School. This is a teacher that's been hired to assist or teach in the Aviation Academy, and in order to get the training that he will need timely, the travel occurs before the next school board meeting. So I needed to get it on as an off-agenda item, so I'd like for you to do that. And then finally, most of you know that Linda Cobb, who's here today, is retiring. Now, she's not retired yet, although she's not working this week, she happened to be on vacation this week. But I had her come in this morning, because I didn't realize that she wasn't at the last school board meeting, or I would've called her out then. She and her husband here, Fraser, they are good folks. Linda came to the district in 2013. It's kind of a funny story, and she hates it when I tell it, but the governor was announcing his budget or something down at some middle school in Hillsborough County. It's right after I became superintendent, and it was really odd, because I'd never known Linda and never met her, and as soon as I walked in that cafeteria, like, she's all over me like white on rice. I mean, she is like in my face, just helping me, because I think she knew that there was a vacancy in Pasco County. And sure enough, she made an impression. And we hired Linda to come on as the Communications Director of February of 2013. She's given seven years of service to this district, and prior to that, she was with the Hillsborough County School District in their communications department. Linda and I have a kind of a symbiotic relationship, where we have this rule to keep each other in check, and sometimes that works, sometimes it didn't, particularly when we were both of the same mind, because that was not a good thing, we both thought the same way. But Linda's a dear friend, she has served this district well. I'm going to miss her, I know this district will miss her, and we just want to thank you for all your efforts over the last seven years, over the last 30-plus years, but seven years of this district, and thank you very much. Love you, thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can go to vacation, or retire, or whatever you're going to do, so yeah.
Thank you, Linda, we do appreciate you.
That's all I have, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? You sure? Are you sure?
That's enough for this district.
All right, I'm sorry, yeah, well, all right. That's the first time I've ever heard her say anything. All right, thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Gad?
Well, I also want to just comment that I'm really going to miss Linda. She's been a pleasure to work with, she's had a good, easy temperament, and I think she's just done an excellent job, and she's worked hard for the seven years that she's been here. I'm excited that she's retiring and going to have some fun, and hopefully go on to bigger and better things, but I'm certainly going to miss her. I wanted to just make you aware of one thing, and the date eludes me, it's in early April. But I wanted to let you know regarding the West Side, that the Superintendent and I, along with several members of the executive team, are meeting with folks from all across the county, on the west, or on the west side of the county, not-for-profits, the federally qualified Health Center Premier, Dan Biles with the county, Parks and Recreation, transportation folks, and we're going to share with them what our plan is for West Side schools going forward. And then we're also going to talk with them about how we can work together, rather than in silos, to make a difference on the west side of the county, because we can improve our schools, we can remodel them, we can do all kinds of different things in our school, but we need to address some very basic issues at the same time, having to do with transportation, workforce development, parks and recreation. So we're going to take a stab at trying to get everybody on the same page and working in the same direction, so we'll let you know how that goes. Early April, I'll have my calendar in front of me, but I'll let you know as it approaches.
April 9.
Thank you. Mr. Shipley?
Just very quickly, I am making the finishing touches on NEOLA update 20.1, so I'm going to be sending that to Dennis and the folks at NEOLA to review. My plan is to get that to the board members in a week or two, so that we can workshop it at that first meeting in April. So I'll be on the lookout for those being posted on the Board Docs website. Other than that, there is an addendum to item 10.1 that has been uploaded into Board Docs as well. Thank you.
Ms. Kuhn?
Good morning. I have a couple things to share with you this morning. The first is, this is National School Breakfast Week, and so I wanted to share with you the stories of three schools who have made great changes in their breakfast-in-the-classroom efforts, and just to share some information with you about that. The first one I'd like to highlight is Northwest Elementary, and they went from 51% of average daily attendance eating breakfast to 75 over the course of a year. So a huge shout out to Nicole Reynolds and her team, as well as the FNS team for that. That was one of our biggest increases we have seen. And then also wanted to highlight Chasco Middle School, they made a 13% increase. And then also 5A High School and Zephyr Hills High School made some great strides. And Zephyr Hills had an 8% increase and a 7% increase, and that's before really all the targeted efforts went to the high schools, because our focus has been mainly in elementary and middle. And so when you think about, you know, 8% and 7%, that's over 100 more kids eating breakfast each day, and so we're really proud of that. So I'd like to thank those schools administrations, as well as the FNS Department for making that happen. Really exciting news. Also wanted to share some information with you, as Mr. Browning said, about staff's plans regarding the coronavirus, and just to give you an overview of that. We have been working for the past week with the departments and key stakeholders, Lisa Kern and the school nurses, Mark Fox and the maintenance team, as well as the custodial specialists who are out in schools every day, transportation, food service, and also after-school enrichment programs has been a key stakeholder in this as well. We've worked with Mr. Hagerty and Ms. Cobb on public homepage, the information, if you go on the webpage, you'll see the banner that says "School Health," and that's where we have information for the public to go. Mr. Browning recorded a video that was posted last Wednesday with information. We have links for the Department of Health, as well as the CDC, and we'll continue to monitor and update those links. We have been working, as of yesterday, with a vendor regarding hand sanitizer, and so we'll be updating schools with that information once we have it. As you might imagine, there are some restrictions on how much you can buy, so we've been working with that as of yesterday. And then also, we've been communicating with principals, so that they have what has been shared with staff, what's been shared with plant managers, what's been shared with food service managers, and making sure that everything is being cleaned and disinfected regularly, and that it's being communicated to students and staff to wash their hands as frequently as possible. We're also, we also have some responsibilities drafted, so we have more of a formalized plan for each stage of the virus. So I wanted to give you that update, we'll continue to keep you updated on that, and Mr. Hagerty will continue to communicate out to schools, and also to parents and students and staff. Thank you.
Ms. Swinson, sorry. Ms. Hilton?
My turn, how awesome. I just wanted to tell you the results of an awesome opportunity we had this weekend for our students to display all of their talents at the Odyssey of the Mine Tournament. We had 149 teams attend, 55 earning the right to go to state. That competition is April 11th. Thanks so much for your support of that. We also, of course, got to celebrate the talents of our elementary students at All County Chorus this weekend as well. When we return from spring break that Monday, we'll have our Mental Health Summit, and this is going to be a very important event to bring together many community partners around services for our students, and so I wanted to make sure you had that down and knew that we were prioritizing that event, and hope that you can, appreciate your support of that, hope you can join us too. Thank you.
Ms. Exler-Nettles?
Good morning.
I'm so sorry. This is what happens when I don't read my notes in order. We also have Ms. Anne Corcoran here for item 9.5 for classical preparatory.
Thank you.
All right, good morning. I just wanted to say thank you to all the school teams and the district student support program services staff that pull together our Student Congress events. The secondary groups met last week, and they had some amazing team time and school collaboration, and you probably see the fruits of their labor in the many see-something, say-something events that are happening this week around the middle schools. And I also wanted to give a public thank you and shout out to Ms. Bodwin herself, as well as various other district leaders and three sites who hosted Leadership Pasco's Education Day last week. Thank you for greeting that group. Sanders Memorial had some amazing students show off their steamed thinking. Land O' Lakes Culinary students did an ever amazing job serving lunch, and I'm talking about the opportunities the students have there. And Cypress Creek Middle and High showcased their engineering and criminal justice programs for the group. And then many of our district directors and leaders jumped on and off the bus at various points to share what's happening across the district. So Chris Williams with planning, and Cristo with safety, Mary Gray from after-school enrichment programs, Steve Hagerty with communications, and then Samantha Del Valle and Lori Romano finished up the day with choice and pathways at PHSC. So it was truly a very collaborative and amazing day.
Thank you. Ms. Poe?
Hi, good morning. So I just wanted to share something that kicked off this week at all of our schools, which is the comprehensive needs assessment visits. And so that's really a collaborative effort, where we work through the departments supporting these, we're all there with the school team, and this is the time of year where our schools are fully engaged in this year's work, but they're also already thinking ahead to their plans for next year. So it takes a lot of coordination, and Ms. Hilton and her team help out a lot in making sure that we can have these site visits take place throughout the month of March. So it's exciting to get to visit all of our schools in that timeframe. Also wanted to just highlight all the great things that are going on at our elementary schools. As already noted, our great success with Odyssey of the Mine. We also had a recent Living Wax Museum in honor of Black History Month, which took place at Veterans Elementary School last Friday. If you haven't seen it already, you can definitely look on our website and the school's website to see that great activity honoring those great historians for that month of February. And then tonight, I did email all of you, a great event happening at Sanders Memorial. It is called the Design on Display Event. The pre-show begins at 5:00, gallery walk from 5:30 to 7:00, and they will be highlighting their design and engineering projects at that steam magnet school. There's also TEDx speeches happening all night, so we look forward to seeing some of you there.
Thank you. Dr. Isle?
Yeah, I do just want to start by echoing the positive words about Linda Cobb. You may not realize it, but there are many evenings where we have ongoing communication about serious situations that are occurring, and I've always felt blessed to have her support and know that she is there and can help with any situation that's occurring. So you will be missed, thank you very much. Lots of great things going on at high schools as well. I want to let you know that Vanessa and I were out at 5A High School beginning of the week. We did conduct formal walkthroughs there. Things are looking good, campus is quiet. I will tell you, the extra security has made a difference, so I wanted to share that with you. And then also, you may have seen on the news this morning, River Ridge High School actually has students being able to talk to Drew Morgan, one of our astronauts, so that's very exciting. River Ridge has also invited Kren students over as well as part of that initiative. We also have Zephyr Hills High School, Building 200 just got done, it looks great, I was able to take a walkthrough of it, and so it's really exciting to see that community get basically a newer building that their students can really grow in. So it's going to be nice for the community. Thank you.
Dr. Skengut?
I'm just going to share a story. Like, we really support experiential learning in our schools, and so I was at Pineview Elementary the other day, and they were doing an enactment of Ellis Island. And so these are second grade kids, all dressed up, they had their passports, they had to go through all the steps to get, hopefully not put in detention, but to get a ticket to travel. So I met the Moore family, husband and wife, daughter, and they were actually in the train station with a ticket, so they had made, they had gotten all the way through Ellis Island, and the little girl said to me, it's like, I said, "Well, where are you going?" They're like, "Oh, we're going to Chicago." I said, "Oh, that sounds nice." She goes, "Dr. Skengut, do you think it snows there?" And I'm like, "Well, good luck to you and your family." So, but those opportunities to actually, they had read a book, they had watched the video, but then to actually live it, boy, the, you know, the learning that's happening and those opportunities is just incredible, so wanted to share that with you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. Hilton for some presentation on the Fine Arts Month.
Okay, thank you.
If, we were going to wait for the proclamation, but we do have some students here, so could we have permission possibly to go ahead and do that right now?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. I'd like to call up Mr. Tom Biking.
This is exciting.
Good morning.
This is really exciting. Get it tight. Thank you, Mr. Browning, Mr. Alfonso, our distinguished board members, and a special thank you to Vanessa Hilton for an opportunity to speak to you all today. It is officially the Fine Arts in our Schools Month, according to the state, and I sat out here last month at a board meeting and saw CTE do a wonderful presentation, and I said, "Boy, when do we get our chance?" And this is it. So hopefully you had a chance to enjoy the Mitchell String Ensemble that was out in the lobby. I asked them here, because I wanted you to see what can happen in two and a half years when we add a program. So that is, that is the result of that. Hopefully you enjoyed that. I also want to thank Michelle Christie, my partner in crime here, for organizing all the fabulous art that's out there. All right, so this is new to me, so we're going to do this together and see how this works. Did I mention this is really exciting? This is really exciting for me. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the fine arts things, starting with dance. Did you know our secondary schools have held 13 major dance performances, including performing at the District Veterans Day event? Our dance programs have participated in more than 10 dance competitions so far this year. We currently have at least five students attending college on dance scholarships. Education and the art and dance engages the artistic process of creating, performing, and critical analysis. Music. Education and the art, dance engages the artistic process of creating, performing, and critical analysis. Music. Did you know, so far this year, we have had 1,207, well, let's make that 208, well, we'll be 209 music performances, and our students have earned 538 individual superior ratings, 209 individual excellent ratings, and this just keeps going, because we're, now we're in evaluation season. So this will go up exponentially. Longleaf Elementary is the only elementary school in the state of Florida to earn the distinction of being an arts model school in all three categories, art, music, and theater. We have currently 18 students that are receiving music scholarships and several still waiting to hear. Almost every student that is receiving an arts scholarship is also on an academic scholarship. So, just something to keep in mind, there is a connection. Music. Did you know, we had nearly 500 students participate in the district-sponsored All County Music Events. These include All County Band, All County Chorus, All County Elementary, which just happened this past weekend, and All County Jazz, which will be coming up in another month or so at the Chasco Event. Wiregrass Ranch High School is the first Pasco High School to have students selected to the All-State Band in chorus, band, and orchestra for all three events. JW Mitchell Band received state recognition in the Kraushaar Award four years in a row. You might ask, what is that? The award is given when a band earns superior ratings, which is the highest rating, in both marching and concert at the district and the state level. They've done it four years in a row. Wiregrass Ranch High School earned first place at the State FMBC Marching Band Competition. That means they were the best in the state, and they're right here from Pasco County. So while we're speaking of Wiregrass, I got to do this, don't I? So let me go ahead and do that. Let me get, get me caught up.
Did I, did I mention this is really exciting?
Thought I'd let you know that. So here we go. So while we're talking about music, thank you, Mr. Browning, I have some guest performers for you. These are some wonderful students from Wiregrass High School, and they just finished their choral competition evaluation this weekend, which they earned straight superiors. And I asked them, thinking about, just sing a little segment of what they did this past weekend.
Excellent. Welcome.
[singing] I am in love and I dare not to leave. The very pain lies on my breast. I am in love and no one knows it. But a troubled mind cannot rest. I am in love. 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 Love is 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 love.
Wow, excellent.
That's right. Whenever I have one of those depressing days, that always brings me back. So, the music, the fine arts, it's just, it's, it's music, it's just to the soul. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alfonso.
Theater. Hit the button. Theater. Did you know, so far, we've had over 77 theater performances, and students earned 139 individual superior ratings, 96 individual excellent ratings, and 11 critics awards. Eight high schools currently offer theater, drama, or musical theater courses, and eight middle schools currently offer theater, drama, or, in the musical theater courses. Three students are currently attending college on a theater scholarship. Did you know, River Ridge had one act in full-length plays chosen to represent our district at the State Thebesian Festival two years in a row. Gulf Middle School has the largest theater program in the county. Their students consistently, not like me, right? Their students consistently earn higher ratings than most schools in the state of Florida. All the students at Roushi and Wesley Chapel High School earn superior or excellent at the Thebesian Festival. We are experiencing growth in all our theater programs, including Pineview, Sunlake, Wiregrass, Land O' Lakes. Waiteman, Zephyr Hills, Gulf High School, and Pasco High School added theater courses to their course offerings this year. Visual art. Did you know, so far this year, students participated in 75 art shows, 139 art displays, 25 competitions. Students earned 79 art awards to date. 15 students are currently attending college on an arts scholarship and several still waiting to hear. We currently have artwork displayed in our state Capitol and in our nation's Capitol. We have artwork displayed at the prestigious Art Basel Show. Our Performing Arts Centers. Did you know, together, our Performing Arts Centers were booked 397 days last year, and many of those were filled with two or more bookings in a day. We add both centers together, and that's what we have. This is impressive if you think of the fact that the time that we are off during the school year, add, including weekends, is almost six weeks, plus we have two, two and a half months off in the summer, and nobody wants to do anything on Sunday. So when you add all that together, this is really quite impressive. The Center's first priority is to serve our schools and our district events. The Centers provide educational programming and host field trips. The Centers serve our community with a variety of programming. Our Centers can be rented by the community for special events. The Centers are the Pasco home to the Florida Orchestra that we brought in so that the students can enjoy that. The Centers host dance competitions, theater, and music competitions, and the Centers produce summer theater camps for Pasco students and the students of our neighboring counties. I opened my statement, or my presentation today with, "Did you know?" Well, now you know. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Biking. That was excellent. Thanks for bringing the live performances. Okay, we're going to move the closed appeal hearing to after the action item 15.4. So we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any, are there any items that a board member would like removed?
Yes, I just need one pulled for grammatical correction, and that is 9.5, just a grammatical correction.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with all addenda excluding 9.5.
And adding 10.1, so moved.
Second.
Madam Chair, I think it's unfair that we're being forced to come back to speak to the item that's on the agenda when it was published and is still in the agenda right now.
All in favor? All in order? I'm sorry. We're out of order. All in order? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. We are on... Item 9.5. Ms. Armstrong?
All right, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Alfonso for the correction.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Madam Chair, board members, actually, the keen eye of Ms. Armstrong identified at least a typographical error that was in the last page of the, the published agenda item on this matter, and what's happened actually is that item has been now subsequently corrected. The last paragraph had provided, let me get the actual language, because we couldn't get it up on Board Docs, but, what page?
Board Docs is down. But Board Docs is working now.
Okay, so it is subsection 2, paragraph C. It is the, one, two, three, four, sixth line in. It says, begins by saying, "The school will adopt the sponsor's student progression plan," and that sentence will just end right there. The allowing part, the remainder of that sentence will be stricken. So that will be the actual hard copy that will be submitted for the board's, the chair's signature today. There was a dangling phrase that didn't resolve, and so we resolved it that way.
Okay. I make a motion to approve 9.5.
So moved. I mean, second. Motion by Armstrong, second by Crumley, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Now miscellaneous action items, I need a motion to approve 15.1, which is the...
Adoption of instructional material.
We did that one.
No.
Is there something you...
No, keep going.
Okay, okay. Motion to approve item 15.1, the adoption of instructional materials for elementary art, 2D art, and Spanish.
And now I'll say it, so moved. Second.
Motion by Crumley, second by Armstrong, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have a proclamation of Fine Arts Month. Is Mr. Biking lead?
Yes.
He's back here.
Oh, he's still here. Okay, we have to read it into the record then, does somebody? I can read it. Okay.
A proclamation recognizing March 2020 as Fine Arts Education Month, whereas Pasco County Schools recognizes the arts defined as dance, music, theater, and visual arts for separate and distinct disciplines, each with its own body of knowledge and skills as an important element of complete and balanced education. And whereas imagination and creativity are increasingly understood as critical capacities needed for success in the 21st century workforce, and all students participating in arts education courses benefit from the skills and processes developed through the arts and apply those skills in a variety of disciplines and settings, no matter their intended career path. And whereas, learning in and through the arts enables students to develop critical thinking and creative problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding, which support academic success across the curriculum, as well as professional growth outside the classroom. And whereas, arts education innovatively ignites and engages learners personally and enhances the social and emotional morale, as well as the quality of students in all school cultures, by helping develop self-confidence, boost self-reliance, and increase empathy and compassion towards oneself and others. And whereas, arts education is essential for all students in Pasco County Schools as a part of a well-rounded education. Now therefore be proclaimed by the District School Board of Pasco County that March 2020 be observed as Fine Arts Education Month in Pasco County Schools, and urges all citizens to join this special observant.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion by, I don't think we had, a motion by Harding, second by, I think it was Armstrong.
It was.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need, does anyone want to read in the autism? Do you have it?
I have it right here.
Okay.
Okay, proclamation, pardon me, proclamation recognizing April 2020 as National Autism Awareness Month, whereas each year, people across the globe take time to recognize the millions of people living with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavioral skills of those affected by it, and whereas 1 in 59 American children are diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And whereas in Pasco County Schools, we provide services for more than 1,000 students on the autism spectrum. And whereas students are provided educational services in a variety of settings, from general education classes to separate ESC classes. And whereas this number has increased over time as identification methods have improved, and whereas Pasco County Schools continues awareness efforts in order to educate professional students and community members about autism and best practices in educating individuals with autism. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the District School Board of Pasco County does hereby, hereby join the nation in recognizing April as National Autism Awareness Month as a symbol of our commitment to creating a culture of disability awareness and inclusion for all members of our school community.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Altman, second by Harding, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to take an off-agenda item 15.4, which is the aviation.
Second.
Motion, Altman, second Armstrong, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I will move approval of 15.4 out-of-state travel for aviation teacher.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Altman, second by Crumley, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're going to move to the expulsion hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, what we'll do at this time, if, we'll have to have this as a closed appeal hearing, which is what it is, we will then, after the hearing, have to come back onto the record to announce the board's disposition, and the board can resume with the agenda to cover board member comments and any other closing remarks by staff. We'll also have public comment at that time on non-agenda items. So at this point, Madam Chair, I'd ask that if we could take just a minute or two to clear the boardroom so that we can prepare for the appeal hearing, and I'd like to take a minute or two just to walk outside and discuss the rules with the parent.
All right, thank you. Okay, let the record reflect that after a hearing, the board accepted the recommendation for the expulsion by, recommendation by Superintendent Browning.
And if I may, it was a unanimous vote by the board.
Okay, thank you. And we are on individual board member reports. Mrs. Harding?
So, in honor of Fine Arts and Education Month, I had an opportunity to attend a couple of fine art things. I got to go to Cruz Lake Middle School to listen to their band, because I wasn't able to attend their concert, so Mr. Ronan was like, "Why don't you just come to the bandroom and we'll perform it for you?" So it was really awesome. They're just so amazing. I also had the opportunity to go watch Dayspring Academy's secondary play of Peter Pan. I laughed so hard, and I really enjoyed that entire performance. I also got to attend the Black Tie Concert for Mitchell High School last week. I'm continuously blown away at our students' talent, and I want to thank their band director, Joel Kena, for fostering a love of music into their students, and also for Mr. Biking for being there, because I think they were practicing for their evaluation, so they had some judges back there to give them feedback, and Mr. Biking was one of them. So it was really awesome. I also had the opportunity to attend Northwest Elementary's buddy, buddy bench ceremony. I had never, I have never gone to a buddy bench ceremony, and I just want to, I just love, 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 love the buddy, the buddy bench. And I'm not sure if you guys know what the buddy bench does, but there are, there's like a kindness squad that's in charge of, actually, they're called kindness ambassadors in every classroom at Northwest, and they're in charge of watching the bench at recess. So when students need a friend to play with them, they go and sit on this bench, and the kindness ambassadors will come up to them and ask them to play. So I thought that was such a fabulous way to build friendships and a kindness culture. And right now, I was told that we have 17 benches in our elementary schools all over our county, so I wanted to thank, thank for that. And this kind of piggybacks off of what Dr. Skengar said, I actually had the opportunity to help launch the new reading unit in second grade at Bexley Elementary School. They're reading the book Seed by Seed, and the story is all about the life of Johnny Appleseed. And throughout this story, there's different central messages. To get students excited, the teacher set up a courtroom, complete with a judge and a bailiff, and I got to be the bailiff. It was pretty cool. The council, who were the teachers, each dressed up as one of those central messages and had to explain why it was more important than the others. And then the jury, who were the students, utilized the rubric, which will be one of the one that they're going to be assessed with, on a nearpod to rate them. And at the very end, the jury voted whose central message was most important. I really want to commend the Bexley teachers. They did a fabulous job at engaging students, utilizing the nearpod and fun costumes, and I was really blown away and excited that they invited me to join this launch. Yesterday morning, I also got to spend some time at Cypress Elementary School. I really want to thank Ms. Berryhill and her assistant principal, Ms. Tannello, for everything they're doing at their school. From the moment I walked in, Ms. Berryhill just spoke so highly of her teachers and staff, and that just really warmed my heart. There's so much fun learning there. I even got to go into a fifth grade class and go on a virtual reality of a black hole with virtual reality glasses. It was really fun. I also got to visit their SPP unit, and I did want to point out, and I did talk to Dr. Skengar, and I have talked to Mr. Browning, that they do need support there. Those students have had multiple teachers this year, and their teachers are getting hurt. And I just witnessed that yesterday, so I...